Go ahead and start recording and start the meeting. Thank you everyone for coming. I apologize for being a minute or too late. We'll go ahead and start introductions. Michelle Thompson, trustee, mother, wife, grandmother, whatnot. I have three kiddos that were in the Lakeland district and now I have grandkids now.
I'm Jaclyn Myers. I have three kids in the district.
Shannon Riley. I have two kids in the district and I work at Timberlake Middle.
Melody Spicer, our teacher at Twillings Elementary.
Mary Carmine, our graduates, mother of graduates and our teacher.
Shayna Hofstadter. I have a graduate, a sophomore, and I teach at the Keeper.
Chantel Kirk. I teach second grade at the Keeper and I have an eighth grader and a third grader at the Keeper.
Tiffany Young. I'm a district employee and I have two graduates.
Amanda Leach and I teach at Garwood.
Delaney Gordon, Lakeland graduate and current teacher.
Shannon Hall, teacher at Lakeland High School.
Rebecca Haas, a community member, teacher, taxpayer, 24 years in. One graduating this year from the high school and one in middle school.
Shonda Heacock, a teacher at Lakeland High School, taxpayer, community member.
And let's say I teach at Lakeland High School, live in Racton.
I'm just in today.
You're just in today.
Maria Parker, board clerk, fifth, first grader at Garwood.
So, we are going to go ahead and get started. Jaclyn, can you help me out? Twenty-five twenty is back here. It was tabled.
Well, so twenty-five twenty and twenty-five thirty were the two policies that we were going to take to the board and you wanted to have some discussion and so you did that last night. The other policies that they tabled, I did not put them back on this one because I didn't include them in the agenda. So I figured we just add them to the next agenda just because transparency.
Okay. So on twenty-five twenty, the board did, not twenty-five, twenty-five, I apologize, I'm exhausted. So I'm not thinking very clearly.
This one we got mostly through. Twenty-five thirty, we stopped midway, like, or actually after like lying to.
I was gonna say twenty-five thirty.
Twenty, we did go through.
Yeah.
And that was done. Twenty-five thirty, we can bring up and start the process of working through. I did mention to the board that brainstorming some ideas to possibly help speed up the process of sort of a temporary approval. Bob talked about having at least two sets of eyes on something before something just gets tossed in front of children to allow it to at least get started, but then go through the supplemental process. So we should consider how we want to incorporate that into the supplemental curriculum review recommendations. Let's change that up here. Alright, so I don't understand why we have to have this bluff paragraph beginning. But, because the policy initially was just these two paragraphs, which as Bob said last night, less is more. So we, I would love anybody's input for this policy chiming in, whatnot.
And this one is long.
So twenty-five twenty, correct?
Correct. Twenty-five thirty.
Thirty, thirty. I apologize, my, no, no, no.
How many earlier said it feels like this is day seven of this week? It's only Thursday, so.
Well, I think we're kind of back where we were at the beginning last week when we were discussing what exactly does this all entail as far as like the doability of it, the user friendliness of it, how is that going to work for the board with regards to the teachers in the classroom trying to actually adhere to this two sets of eyes or timeline of supplemental curriculum. And again, I just, I'm trying to brainstorm what could be a potentially user friendly idea that would work for everybody involved, that would, you know, satisfy your, the board's role as a governing body and the idea of making sure that they're aware of everything that's essentially going on in the classroom, but also with the idea that teachers are still able to have that flexibility within their professional discretion to realize, you know, this is an activity that is going to benefit my students, it's going to challenge, or it's going to reinforce, or it's going to strengthen, and I can't wait, and this is, and this is going to be the crux of this situation. We just can't wait for that timeline of four weeks, or if I happen to be in a weird window, two week or one week. It's just not, so I guess the question maybe even having to go all the way back to is like, what does this really look like? And I just feel like it's just a huge, huge ask. I don't know. So I mean, I understand where the board's coming from with regards to their role. I'm trying to understand that, but I'm also kind of dismayed or disheartened with the idea that at some level we're not being given any sort of professional discretion or discernment, that we know what's good for what's going on in our classroom, for, with our students under the umbrella of the curriculum that we've already stated the board has approved. So that's where I kind of struggle with quite a bit of this. So, and I don't know.
Okay. Well, as it was brought out last, learning materials could not be articulated in the sense that learning materials are actually supplemental curriculum. I mean, when you guys are out there finding something on the fly that you want to use to help reinforce what it is you're trying to teach from the curriculum that you can't seem to adapt to your kiddo's needs, if you're finding something somewhere else, that has to be considered supplemental curriculum. The board has to give approval for that. So on that note, I think it would be better to identify the fact that supplemental curriculum is basically everything that isn't curriculum. And I think if we, not necess, yeah, necessarily, I say if we scratch everything on here and then write the policy specific for our district, I think it would benefit everyone under the umbrella of the district. Because there's, there's a lot of, I mean, what, this has come from ISBA. This has not come from people within our district putting their heads together to say this is what we want it to look like. And I think that's what I've been trying to convey, maybe not very well, throughout these obstacles we seem to find within our policies. It doesn't have to be so rigid, but it does have to be structured. And personally, I'd like to scrap the first paragraph. I'd like this paragraph to be the first paragraph right here. I want to move this one down to below it. I don't know that we're following that, but I'm not sure. And then I want to identify what it is that would be an acceptable process for teachers to be able to utilize materials that they find for their kiddos and work with the parents and the fact that the parents have the right to know what's going in front of their children and give the board, I mean, support the board in their responsibility for approving curriculum. Because supplemental materials are curriculum. Learning materials that you find on the internet that you put in front of children to teach them something is curriculum. There's no special definition that says that you can find something and teach it and it not be curriculum. That's all defined in statute. So we're just trying to uphold the law, really, is all we're trying to do.
May I briefly get definitions for curriculum, supplemental material, and supplemental curriculum? That might help me clarify what's going on.
Because I've never thought of curriculum as learning materials.
I thought it was just content that we taught and then.
Well, what is. Materials are what supports the curriculum. Curriculum is the objectives that you're trying to teach to your students. And then learning materials are what you use to teach that curriculum. The tools.
Separating different things from tools. And that's even confusing, I think, for some teachers often, like just knowing. We think of curriculum as the tool that we've adopted. Instead, curriculum is the standards.
It's the standards.
Yeah. And that's what I think is confusing a lot of times. Curriculum is the standards.
That's first part is what the standard is.
And the tool that we've adopted is a learning material.
Okay. So the term curricular materials is defined as textbooks, instructional media, including software, audiovisual media, and internet resources. That is curriculum.
Curricular materials. I think that's just, yes, we're just getting into the semantics of it, but yeah. It's tricky because sometimes you hear, this is my curriculum, these are my books. But then other people say, this is my curriculum I teach, that's social studies. You know, but curricular materials helps to clear it up.
That little line is literally in law. That's what's in statute. That's not us, that's not, that's, that is what is in the statute.
But that's, the difference is curricular materials versus curriculum. Those are two different things.
And that's where we're getting hung up.
That's what's been tricky, I think, trying to convey, two different things.
Curriculum is standards.
So like the title of twenty-five thirty should be supplemental curricular materials, is what you're saying?
Well, it was originally learning materials and then they switched it up for supplemental curriculum. But yeah, it shouldn't essentially be supplemental curriculum materials, because it's not curriculum.
Materials are the tools they use for it. So just adding materials and that would maybe help. I don't know.
And I understand the board has a duty to review curriculum and/or curricular materials. What else does the board have a legal mandate to review before material goes in front of students?
Hang on, I'm gonna stand up for a moment. So stepping back a few paces. Shannon, curricular materials and curriculum are not the same?
I think it's, it's just kind of clears it up to add that materials word. Because for some people, hearing curriculum is, this is all of the standards that I teach. But then if you have like the materials that I use to teach the curriculum, I think it just kind of depends when you went to school. Sometimes it's like, these are my standards that I teach and then the.
So are you saying curriculum is not curricular materials?
Not to everyone. Often not. Yeah.
I taught IB for years and I always explained curriculum was like the skeleton. And then content and curricular materials would be what land on that. So like they're saying, there's, it just kind of depends, the school, if that where you came from, but that definitions do, there is a variety of definitions.
Shannon's right. It kind of depends on. Because.
I think newer teachers would be confused with this.
Well, you know, when we talk about state curriculum, when we were adopting curriculum, it was the standards is what are we teaching? Not how we're teaching, or what we're teaching with.
Well, except for then they would have, you know, here's state approved curriculum you can use and it would actually be a textbook.
Yeah.
So it's all, people interchange it all the time and I, it just, because technically you guys by law are required to teach your standards. And then they will give you recommendations for what material you use to teach your standards. But truly, you are required to teach your standards. But the word curriculum, I mean, you can talk to bigwigs in education, they will interchange curriculum and they call it something different, so.
And we interchange it in our district because we have our curriculum committee that approve, like is looking for a new social studies curriculum right now. And we don't, we're not looking for new standards right now, obviously. So that's confusing, I think.
Right. Well, all curricular materials need to be adopted. That is in Idaho law. And that is part of the job of, as a trustee, as, because the, the school board is the governance of the school. So with respect to what you're saying, if we are not approving curriculum, because those are standards and those are mandated by the State Board of Education, we are mandated to approve curricular materials, which would then be everything from the books that we choose to put in front of the children and anything else to enforce the learning standards that we have no control over creating would, would be the same thing. Okay. So then, putting that into words.
More acronyms, people, folks, education.
So learning materials is just a term we will no longer be using in this policy, right?
Well, I guess I'm flipping back over to twenty-five twenty. Maybe there should be some.
Well, so twenty-five twenty, that's on our current. It's not the same, is it, right?
Especially looking at twenty-five twenty with that definition for curricular materials, the last bit on there, internet resources, that is so broad as to be meaningless. For internet resources, is that like, would you please Google the definition of this word? Or is that, please use this program to learn grammar?
In, it's my understanding that internet resources would be any applications, platforms, or documents that we retrieve from the world wide web.
Okay.
That would be my simplistic, like if someone said internet resources to me, it would be applications, websites, or any information that I pulled from the world wide web.
And that, the thing that that's in statute may be like intentionally broad for the lawmakers.
Right. I mean, the other piece I think you guys have to remember, part of the confusion here is this wasn't an educator that wrote this. This wasn't an attorney. And so there, I mean, we have found through the last five policies, they've interchanged multiple words and had multiple meanings and it, back to Shannon's point, it's a semantics game. So that's why some of this is, because it wasn't a person who, they put that on there. I mean, they should have said, if you, if you meant websites, you should have said websites or whatever. But it wasn't an educator that wrote it, it was an attorney. And, you know, so that's why I think Michelle's recommending that we just go through and write, like, what is, what do we, what is our interpretation of the meaning and we just write that. Because so that it is really clear and everybody has an understanding and it's not this semantics game because I, you know, I mean, that, some of that's left up to interpretation because it was an attorney that wrote it, not an educator.
So when we adopt curriculum or textbooks, we go through the process of having it out and you, you get the committee together and whatnot. Is that the same process then that the supplemental curriculum materials need to go through as well?
The only thing the state, the only law specific to it, they actually call it a curriculum adoption committee and it's, my interpretation of the law is specific to textbooks, not specific to approval for supplemental. It's when you are buying a big textbook.
Right. But do we have a policy here in Lakeland School District currently under, we do, I know we do, right? A supplemental policy committee?
No. No, we don't have a policy. We have a process. We do not have a policy. That's what this is. Yeah.
So what is that process? Is it similar to the overarching?
No, because there's no guidance on that, other than the board approves it.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So there is guidance from the state specific to an adoption process when you're doing a full-blown adoption textbook process. But they don't get into the weeds. They just, basically the rule is you have to have half parents versus, you know, half of it, teachers. That's the guidelines for that. The law says that the board has to approve all curriculum. They're the governing body, they're instructed of that. It does not dictate how they do that.
Okay.
So different districts do it different ways. Remember, the laws are typically with an overarching guidance and then it's up to local control at the LEA level to decide that process or the protocol typically. Although as of late, I would say there has been more accompanied procedural docs with ISBA policies, more so than we've seen in the past. So they are starting to get into the weeds a little bit because some of the laws will have more specifics.
Well, then I, then I think that that's definitely, moving forward, if that's the policy and that's the, then there really needs to be a procedure. Because there's going to be a ton.
A ton.
A ton of supplemental.
It's gotta be done, it can't be put off for ten months.
Week one, week two of government and I'm going to be, okay, this is what I'm teaching.
And that's one teacher.
So I can figure something else out before school starts.
And is this effective next year, right? So are we going under the guise of what we've used in the past, just say grandmother? Good for two, but I personally have a lot of resources that I've collected over the last 14 years. Like, are those going to be okay to use? Or do I need to send those? Because then we're talking in the thousands of resources.
Per teacher.
For every teacher.
And I only say that because it will be a lot of work to review all of those for all the teachers in the district.
And a lot of man hours are on the teachers end first and then the lab of man hours on the committee. They're going to be put in a lot of hours, a lot.
And is that something like that you suggested and then trustee Jones agreed with the two eyes on it instead of through the entire committee?
Same initially, two eyes and then.
Yeah, but then go back to them and then you're a full.
And then true, then it's still, it's a cumbersome, yeah, that's true. That builds a tier.
So I think we're gonna just have to talk about things that when we first started, because prior to we did not go through any kind of formal process. I wasn't at the district level at that point, so I don't know what they did, but so we have stuff that you guys have been using forever. And then we were just literally bringing new stuff to the board. So what I'm hearing you all say is you want to bring all your old stuff too.
We have to, if we're, to be compliant, we have to.
Because that's a lot of time.
We have to, that would be, would be required by law and by this policy to do so. There's, we would be out of compliance if we didn't.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing, but it is going to be a lot of work.
No, and I understand, I hear you. What was brought out last week was considerations for the fact that if there was a prior adopted curriculum, and again, sometimes I feel like we're arguing over the semantics. But if there was a prior adopted curriculum, which means it went through the correct process and there was supplemental materials utilized to support that curriculum, but now we've gone with a different curriculum, if you're utilizing those resources from a prior adopted curriculum, well, then they should still be, in my mind, I'm not speaking for the board, but in, it would be my understanding that you should be able to utilize the resources that you have had that supported the curriculum that had been previously approved. I mean, you can't, we can't go back to we can't go back in time and something that was already approved, need to re-approve it if it was already approved. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's where I'm, I get a little cautioned when if, if everything was being used and there was never any approval, then yeah, there needs to come before the board. But having been in this district for twenty-some odd years, I mean, we used to rotate curriculum. I used to come into the district office and view all the curriculum because it was laid out annually like it's required to by statute. We got away from that and then our teachers were left to their own devices because we weren't investing financially in our curriculum, which is not how the district should run. So we're trying to put everything back in place, give the teachers the resources they need to teach. What I keep hearing, or at least what I heard at last week's meeting was, you know, teachers want to have the freedom to, you know, on the fly, be able to get something for their student to reinforce what they're trying to teach them. That type of material needs to have at least two sets of eyes on and then go through the process of supplemental, so you can put it in there and know that, you know, if I use this in two years, I'm still good to go because it was already approved. So I don't know if I'm answering your question or if I'm just.
I think you are, but I think we're talking about three different things. So I think like, so I'm thinking about you, Shayne. You have all of our, the S-Bac stuff that we purchased that was with journeys with our old stuff. All of that, Michelle is saying, would be approved because it's a previous. All of the Scott Forsman stuff, all the Reader stuff, all of that. But there is this middle ground of like, I'm trying to think of something that you used from Teacher Pay Teachers in 2015.
Well, for example, like I used to work at a learning store 26 years ago. So I bought like those.
Tons of stuff, yeah.
Twenty-six years ago. But there is still some stuff like on nouns and verbs that I will pull from that. That hasn't been.
It's a singular worksheet or a packet worksheet.
Or I have stuff that I took from my master teacher 26 years ago that I have no clue where she got it from and it's great stuff, but that's not approved.
And that's the sort of thing that we're also using.
But how do you know that it was approved?
Because I got it from a different district.
From a different district and you just sort of brought it back in, okay, with you.
And after you've taught that long, you've created your own lesson that you kind of fall back on and when would that have gone through any kind of approval?
To your point, when, you know, like I'm just thinking back when we had Dr. Reynolds and we did not have curriculum and we were building our own or whatever. And that, like, she was taking some of that stuff, but for us to be calibrated, we are trying to get back to, you know, you're using it from your core program and some of that. But I feel like there's this, we have all the old stuff, like our, our high school and middle school is still, you're still using some of your collection materials, all that. So we have all the old stuff that was approved, I think. Then you have the new stuff that's been approved that we have started taking through supplemental. But there is this middle ground, there is some stuff that you guys have just pulled over the years that is not necessarily, like I can think of, well, Chantel's in the same boat, but Shayne had, like, there's just, there's this middle stuff that, like, she doesn't even know necessarily where, it's just really good because it's a senior year lesson about possessive nouns or it's a, that's what you're talking about. That's the, that's the grain, I guess.
And that's really even what we're talking about, I think, when we're talking about internet resources. It's, it's basically instead of the old workbooks that we used by a teacher store or the mailbox, like magazines or whatnot, or the things that we got from our mentor teacher when we were student teaching, it's just that, but we found it in the library of the internet instead of, we're not, that's basically where it's moved to. So that's where, where it gets a little sticky too, because when you do say internet resources, it sounds so different than what it typically is for us and how we're using it.
Sounds like we're Googling instead of from a trusted resource.
But we're finding basically the same sort of documents, the same sort of magazines, that all of the materials are the same, just in a different area. It's like the library of the internet.
I use, we all do, our core programs. But then outside of core, we have intervention groups, flex groups, where they're getting what they need at their level and that might not be whatever core has provided. That, that is usually when I'm finding shorter stories or decodable readers that I don't have. I have a lot of those, but, so that's probably a bad example, but chime in if you guys are not doing the same thing. But that's kind of more where I, I'm pulling resources because that's what my kids need at that moment. So I think that's my concern is I want to make sure I'm doing what's best for my kids at all times and I'm scared that if they need something right then and I can't give it to them, that I'm not helping them. I'm, especially like my struggling learners, they need every mediation and during center's time, they need something scaled down, but I don't have it approved, then I'm just leaving them there. Blundering in a way, I guess. I will find a way, I'll find something for the type thing, you know.
Right. I think the majority of that has not gone through the process of formally being approved in every classroom.
We never used to have supplemental materials needing to be approved. It was always the.
Just very, I mean.
The program that we use.
It was just the basal, basically.
Like it's a worksheet, it's a packet, it's a, so it's not a formal.
Some other state activity.
It's that middle of the road.
I think a book.
But I think all of our old stuff, like from previous adoptions, a lot of you still have. But I mean, I know some people still have Scott Forsman and so that's all approved because it wouldn't have a formal process.
We knew what exactly needed to be approved because I'm thinking things that probably would waste the committee's time, like when we make our homework, we get our math bags up from mathlives.com. It generates math bags. It's literally just math bags. I highly doubt the committee wants to have to take the time to. when we make our homework, we get our math facts off of mathaids.com. It generates math facts. It's literally just math facts. I highly doubt the committee wants to have to take the time to look at pages of math facts because we would assume, you know, they're just their math facts, but that's the stuff that I'm thinking of that we pulled from the past that technically, I guess, needs to be approved, but.
But haven't some of those websites, like a math aids or something, I'm just thinking some of those have been approved.
That's right.
Yeah. And so then you can go to like, okay, this site's approved. Like I can print out whatever, I may cheat or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the one that was just approved, is it learning?
There were two that just got approved that were worksheet.
And where?
Something with a K. I can't remember the name of it.
It's dot com. Um, what is, and so what is the process?
Right now?
Yes.
For supplemental or for the general?
The websites or for the whatever or if it's not?
You send it to me and then I add it to a list and then um the Monday after the board meeting, so this coming Monday, um, I go over everything, all the requests with Lisa and then I send it out. I change the process. Um, so there's a Google form now, so it just has, here's the stuff that people have requested and then um it goes out to, and again, anybody, I think we're up to fifty people around the committee. Um, so again, we can tweak the process if you guys wanna do that. There's roughly fifty, so if it's like, do we assign people different things, but then some people wanna see all of it, so we have never done that. But anyway, so I send it to all fifty people. It's anonymous. I'm the only person who's ever looked at the list. Um, Lisa doesn't even know who's on the list and I do a blind CC so people can't see. And then I send it out and people give their comments and now I'm taking all those comments and putting them into a more user-friendly form versus what the form generates. And then it gets submitted to the board. So it is, it truly is a four-week process because I sent it out the week after the board meeting. And so you have up until the next board meeting, so it's, it's a four-week process, cause.
So then the recommendation would be that for anybody currently who would like stuff to be approved for going into next school year, they need to get on that process ASAP?
And I've been talking to the principals about if you guys know that there's stuff that you wanna use, send it to me and then I will just slowly start. And I don't wanna overwhelm people either, like I, so I'm trying to chunk it out, but I have had lots of teachers and lots of principals send out, um, these are the things I want to cover and but I also feel like it takes me a lot of time because like what Chantel suggested, like the math, that's already been approved. And so I feel like I have to go back and check because there's been lots of stuff where people have sent it and then I, I was in a hurry and I didn't check it and then now I've wasted the commit cause it, it was already approved, you know.
So is there?
At least there's.
There is and we've had it for the whole time.
I know, I'm having some.
It should be.
It's, it's.
On the other side, it says, you can search for, for approved curriculum and it'll pop up as a sheet document.
I think all of your principals have it in their weekly newsletters too.
We don't.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I missed one of the meetings a couple of weeks ago where I think some of this was first talked about. But somebody who was there had told me that there was talk like, if there is approved curriculum that teachers are using and, and then they need to make something, something else that's a shorter story or whatever. If they, so they can't go and just find whatever and use it if it wasn't approved, but they can modify.
Absolutely.
What has been approved.
Absolutely.
Is that helpful or is that not helpful?
Given so much prep time a day, you can only do so much. I mean, that's realistic.
Yeah.
What's the point of the thing?
Sorry, I guess we're confused about like how it's being modified.
Well, and also.
She was.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's like taking away but not adding to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
But if I've covered something, if I've covered something and that kiddo's not getting it, me going over it again with them isn't gonna help them. So I need to be able to find something else that's going to reach them in a different way. And it may not be what the curriculum that I'm using is going to allow for. So it may mean that I have to find a activity that covers the exact same concept, but maybe in a different way, or it's chunked differently or broken down differently. Or conversely, if I have a student who is just off and running, like they totally get it and they're ready to go, I can't give them more of what I've already given them, so I need to try to find other activities that are going to take them to that further distance and to strengthen their knowledge and challenge them in a way that maybe this particular activity works through whatever isn't doing. And so that's where we're running into this wall because I, I get it. The policy is that everybody wants eyes on everything that we're doing, so be it, I can't fight that. It is what it is. But we also need to figure out a realistic game plan moving forward to make that happen because again, that, if that means I'm sending files upon files of Google forms to Lynn to have her send them out to whatever fifty people need to look at them before they can get approved, then I guess that's what I'm gonna be doing this summer. But point being is, I can't, like you were saying, I can't leave my kids in, in the dust because I, I, I'm like, well, sorry, I've already taught you from the book.
Well, I mean, that's what we're gonna have to do. When you have nothing to give to them, you can say, I, I'm sorry, I can't give you anything. I'll give it to you in a month.
Your kids change every year too, so it's ideal to be prepared for next year, but I don't know what kids I'm getting. I don't know if what's engaging or what's struggling. And like in math, we assess our kids on a standard every Friday. If they don't get it, then I've already covered like what I read and have taught. Well, then that is teaching, but then I, that's when I have to pull in other things because I've covered all the lessons. So from Friday, I would need stuff ready for Monday to reteach, in which case I'd be either remaking or pulling out their files or going to teachers pay teachers. So I have that stuff ready for Monday. So that's my other concern is situations like that where it does need to be a turnaround, like we don't have a month because there's a, a lot to teach.
No, I understand.
So we can't like in one month, we've gone through four I-ready lessons and we are looking a lot where we don't finish by the end of the year, so.
Right. And a few weeks ago, we were talking a lot about if the curriculum that we have, the tool that we purchased does not meet those, the student needs at that time, what, what group you have or whatnot, then can we, we sometimes will create something, but more often than not, we will find a different teacher that has created something and purchase that ourselves. And that's where I think it gets sticky too, is because I'm thinking our supplemental curriculum typically has been big things that we would like to use in addition to our main tool that we've had approved through by the district because the district's purchasing it for us. And then when we're buying all these little things on our own to supplement that, that's what we haven't gone through an official approval process with.
So if in situations like that, I'm just asking cause I don't know the answer. If it were something else that they found that is this, the same but different as an approved curriculum, is, does that count as just a modification of an approved curriculum or be, just because it was from a different source, is that? Do, would that need to go through the process?
That's what I was asking about.
That's what I mean.
That's the question. That's the question. That's the question to this because I feel like it should fall under the umbrella, but I'm being told that that's not necessarily the case. If it, as we said today in today's meeting, if it goes in front of a student, somebody else eyes have to have seen it first. So I, so in theory, then I'm not, I'm, I'm not trusted to know what's best for my students. I must give all of that over to somebody else who may or may not even understand the things that are on the paper because I teach Spanish. Um, and hope that it gets approved and that I can then use it moving forward. So um, and that's, that's really where we are right now and this is why we're feeling the way we're feeling.
And that isn't the intent. The intent isn't to let the staff feel like they're not trusted or whatever, but that is the end result.
That is what we're feeling.
That is the result. Our board is trying to do their legal obligation.
Right.
So now it's.
That's kind of a clash, so I feel like.
Well, I think that's where it's just great is people are, that's, and I guess I would say it's easy to say that it's a modi, math just seems to be easier to me to say there's a modification of it because you can change the presentation, you can change the delivery, you can change the modality really quickly. That's an easier like, and it would be a quick look to see that it derived from one. ELA is a little bit different. Science and social studies will look a little bit different because you could be like, for instance, I'm teaching ELA and I have a high group and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something about um weather or storms or something. Well, I'm gonna pull a different story with a different Lexi level for my high group versus my low group. And so it doesn't look like, but it's all from, maybe I have an anchor text that I use that's from my core novel, but I have to pull different accompanied text and so their concerns are those accompanied texts approved. And it's not, it's not a direct connection is, I guess, the concern. So that's, that's what they're asking is, would that be considered approved?
I think, I mean, we could get to where we have at least a bank of resources that people can simply pull from, like I know Readworks. I think Readworks is on the approved list. It's either.
It is.
Yeah. So I mean.
We have a lot of, there's a lot on that approved list.
Using as your tool. If we could just, you know, put more things through as we get to, I'm like, oh, I wish this was approved. Than putting that for, I don't know.
I wonder if there's a difference between secondary and elementary, cause a lot of the conversation we're having here, I'm not following very well. At secondary, we create a lot of our own resources. We do not have the same resources that elementary.
We don't have any of that.
And we know like, I'm getting kids that are coming in that are college bound. That's a different type of lesson than I'm teaching that are kids that are just gonna be graduating from high school, which is a different kind of lesson than I'm hoping these kids even graduate from high school. And so we're creating, and that's creating resources all over the place if we can't get to other people's resources. It's a lot of work.
And I think that is a problem right now because it is all listed out by subject, but then to have to go through and you know, you can go through an entire ELA website that's approved, or not even a website, but like a teacher's pay teachers curriculum or you know, like lesson, whatever.
Right.
But it's still not easy to find something that's specific to what we're looking for. You have to literally go through everything or really read through everything to actually find something that's useful. And so I, I think the group list, it's awesome because it's approved, but it's not very user-friendly right now because it's not specific enough to be able to on the fly find exactly what you're looking for.
No, that's ti, it's time consuming to look through the, the things that are in there.
Well, if you already, you know what you already use works, then it is, yeah, it's cumbersome to then go to a different list to find something that's similar that's approved when it's like, this is what I know is best for kids and meets standards. So it's hard.
I did add the board approved curriculum list on our teaching and learning handbook.
On the what?
The teaching and learning handbook. So you all have it.
Oh, the teaching and learning handbook. That's a good one.
I know we had it. At the beginning of the year, we did, but Martin, and then sometimes we forget where everything's at. So thank you. That would be helpful.
And I wonder about high school levels, student-led assignments, student-led projects. That's okay?
That, that was brought up last week when I asked about speech concepts and, and things of that nature. You said as long as it was something that was student-driven, not teacher-driven, that that does not fall under this purview.
Well, cause it's, students aren't instructing all the other students to learn one way or the other. If there is I mean.
They're sharing. Information. It's what the, what the people.
If they're not tasked with the educational um guidance of all of their peers, that's your guys' job. So they're not teachers. They're students.
I mean, I think that the main thing is that we're not gonna get in trouble for something that our kids says.
That's what we're worried about.
That's what we're worried about.
A kid brings up a concept or a topic or something and as part of a current event, speech activity. I, as a classroom teacher, have.
I know you can't control what comes out of their mouth.
When you're like a distinguished teacher, that's a piece of it is really cultivating this culture that they are the leaders and they are, they are teaching each other the content. And you, yeah, and that's part of our evaluation and everything. We are or just the facilitator, but they are the ones that are doing that. And that's what makes it very difficult. I mean, and not, not in primary as much as it is in intermediate and then secondary.
Does that also include like book studies, like if a student gets to go and choose a book to do a book report on? Because that was something that came up at our school recently. And it, we had to, the, the teacher played on the safer side and kind of modified it so that it, they were only books that had already been like approved. So students could like go to like the library and find one. Does that include that for like book reports?
That fits under the johnification. Like the kid can choose a book from the johnification that their parents approved.
Okay.
What if they go to the public library and choose books?
That's their parent, that's needed.
Right.
But they would be able to do a school book report on that book.
If it was appropriate.
Right, okay. Yeah.
I mean, if they went to a public library and had a random book and then wanted to do a book report, I would imagine you'd bet that the appropriateness of it, but of course, it doesn't have to be from the parent. They allowed the kid to check the book out.
Okay.
That wouldn't be from you. If they checked it from our library.
And it's on a book from the public library that the parent's completely fine with, but you as a classroom teacher are like.
Then you have the autonomy to say no to that.
But, okay.
I mean.
But what? But then the parent would argue that's their choice.
And I said, great, I want you to read that book. I don't care, I don't care what my kid reads. And then the teacher says.
No, you can't. That's gonna be.
Well, I, I guess if you're, if it's a book report for an assignment, then you're right. But if it's a share out to the whole class, I think that's different.
Right.
I just could see that being an issue.
Me too. Like the kids like, oh, sorry, you can't share. Everybody else gets to share, but you don't get to share. Your parents like read what you wanna read.
My kid read this book. I think it's fine. Like, why are you singling out my kid, you know?
But I think you'd only single them out with something that was inappropriate.
But who's to say that? Because if the parent doesn't think it's inappropriate.
We have a policy that says what's inappropriate. That has, I mean, you, if somebody wanted to come read a book that was all CRT related, you guys wouldn't allow that. You can't. And it doesn't matter if the parent thought it was fine. You'd say no.
So we would have to proofread or whatever that.
Read all the books.
Or you'd have to see the book report before you let him share it.
That'd be the best way to go with her.
I mean, I just.
I, I would probably just not do the sharing part at all.
Yep. Was at the adult section and give a presentation about it, for sure you'd say no.
I would just exonerate the whole thing.
Yeah, same here.
I mean. Yeah.
In case I'm right.
Well, I mean, I don't think there's really been, I mean, I'm thinking of middle school when I taught middle school. There hasn't been a time where I was like, let's share about the pornographic book you read. You know, maybe, I'm not saying that, I don't think there are many pornographic books.
Oh, gosh.
I have read a few that you're like, oh, that's a lot. Anyway, we've always had reasonable.
It's gonna get really bad.
I know. And then I just remembered my mom watches these. Where's your. Anyway, but we've always like monitored what the kids are saying and just, you know, we don't just let them.
Right, you have discretion and.
Yes, yeah. Like if they're talking about their weekend and maybe they were out like on Tiger with their parents or something like, oh, okay, well, let's move forward to something else. Like, we don't just, we've always done that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I think my biggest worry is just, well, the process, which hopefully will come, but the timeline for approving things that maybe we need quicker, there could be a on-the-fly form for those certain things that we need quicker than other things. Um, and then what are the, who are the two sets of eyes that need to be on that? Does it, is it me as the teacher and another teacher? Does it need to be my principal? Because then like, when you know, principals aren't always available to have, be that second set of eyes.
And do they want that responsibility?
I mean, there are a lot of responsibilities already. So there have been many times when I asked for Mrs. Hoffman and she's dealing with an issue and it's not a deal. So who are those people that can assess eyes is my next question.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'll probably go back to the actual process. Cause I think everything happens, the informal process of getting rid of stuff. So we probably need to look at the process of, and that's what we were just talking about, of actually getting stuff before we can get rid of stuff.
So I know you had mentioned a pre-approval process where there's an intermediate time before it comes before the board. And that's where you had mentioned those two sets of eyes. So I think that question was astute. Who are those two sets of eyes? And what's the timeline that we can expect to have materials returned to us for approval, like for temporary use even?
Um, I don't know. That's what we're here to. Herman, um, what I'm thinking may be best to eliminate um all of this uh whatnot is to eliminate policy twenty-five thirty and incorporate curricular materials being, I mean, it's, it's everything.
So you're not defining supplemental.
Because if you're using something to teach the student, it should be considered a curricular material.
Bob will be really happy because you're condensing two to one. He's gonna think you're a miracle worker.
I know that's not true. Um, but um, that way with, in this particular policy, there is a selection and adoption that we probably need to.
The process.
To be able to incorporate.
What?
The trash can.
Otherwise the door would be stuck. So we're trying to. I tried a chair before and it didn't hold. I think we should put a rock in the trash.
But this has selection and adoption, so maybe we can sort of. But this has selection and adoption. So, maybe we can sort of modify that to some degree, how materials are used.
Maybe we.
And removal. So.
Maybe we define the process for temporary. Well, I, I feel like it's three things. We have a, maybe we just, it's a textbook adoption.
Okay.
A curriculum approval or.
Curricular materials.
Approval. And then we have a temporary approval. Maybe that's how, maybe we, because in my mind, the adoption, it's about the textbook portion of it. It's not about.
The support materials.
It's that comprehensiveness of the whole program, but that's different than.
The supporting materials.
The supporting materials accompanying.
Well, and 2530 really is about getting rid of stuff. So, it doesn't really have anything to do with, I mean, there's that small little paragraph about what we can use.
And if we all agree on that verbiage, then it means the same.
Well, and again, 2530 for our district has been these two paragraphs only. So.
I think it was 2007, I think. Yeah. This one, I think was.
Twenty twenty-one.
No, remember, but this was, wasn't this one that was?
Twenty.
Oh, no, that one was.
This one was not ever, oh, because it didn't get carried over from 2540. Okay.
So, do you want to just copy and paste it all into one and then just start formulating it together? Or do you just want to chunk it?
Actually, we could take these two paragraphs. I'm not taking anything out of the left because it's all cross. Yeah, I just did that. All right, so. So, we scratched 25. Twenty green, 2540, 2530, all stay as the removal document. Right? Oh. Twenty-five forty was rejected for 520. We don't have 25. No, 2540 was what it used to be. Okay. Now, it's going to be 2520. Okay. We need to write this 2530 on that. But 2530 is separate. It's a document because that's about how we remove materials. Okay. So, this is the adoption materials and the ones that are removal of materials. No. No. This is the adoption selection use of the curricular materials. What I'm suggesting is 2530, which is the learning materials, which is technically supplemental curriculum. So, if we merge these two, because otherwise, we should just be copying and pasting for both and they'll be saying the same thing.
What's, does the other one also have a process then for removal? Because that's what the bulk of 2530 is all about. It's talking about.
Twenty-five twenty that we've already gone through does, yeah. It has selection and adoption, use, removal. But we need to modify it so that it's inclusive of the expectation of all materials. So. We shall establish curriculum adoption.
Are we still at square one where everything that we've been using that has not gone through the full process needs to be, is that, did I miss something? Did I tune out for a minute? Is that what we're talking about? Are we needing to still?
No, I think.
What's that all speaking of? Do we still need to have that all, everything through the board?
If it didn't have anything.
If it wasn't.
I think what needs to happen is we need to have the policy say what we want it to say for our district. And then there needs to be guidance from the board based on your concerns. Because like I said, if you've been using materials that have been approved prior, I don't understand why there should be, because to me that, I mean, if you look at the definitive line from this district when it stopped having curriculum approved and when it stopped buying new curriculum, that to me is kind of the cutoff date in my mind. But I don't know what you all feel. All I know is when I got onto the board, I heard very loud and clear, nobody has any curriculum, which is just not acceptable for a school district. So, in understanding where there were holes in what was going on and trying to put things in place so that the teachers felt supported, that the teachers were given curriculum, that the teachers aren't having to spend their money on providing materials, which to me is absolutely ridiculous and should never occur, we're trying to right the wrongs. And so, I can't just answer your question. We have to have the policy in place and then we have to get, you all have to have direction from the board as a whole, not from me.
Yeah, that makes one hundred percent sense to me. I just, I know from fourteen years, fourteen years ago, we had our adopted curriculum. But I know for a fact that I pulled things that did not come from Scott Forsman that fit what I was teaching. So, I used that stuff that was approved. But back then, we didn't have anything like this for worksheets that we used or found or made. So, that's my concern is how far back. But if that's what will be defined in the policy, then hopefully we'll know going forward, like how far back it goes. Yeah. That answers my question.
Okay.
So, what is that definitive line? What year is that?
And how do we know what year we started implementing? We started using. I'm like, oh, I don't know. That gives me more clarity or nothing?
It doesn't.
Okay. Thanks.
If maybe when this is drafted, that some of the people that attend the policy, we have a workshop just around this. And so, that's just kind of like what we did with the dress code policy. Like, we just have some, not a ton of people, but just kind of have all five board numbers here so they can kind of hear. And then you guys have more information. So, it's not you can explain it all. And when you don't have context anymore, it's different than, would that help?
I don't know. So. I don't know. I mean, the way I see it is it's, the committee's putting these policies together. We're sending them out to the public for input. Then it's going before the board to make a decision on, is this what we want governing our schools? So, I can only represent what I take away in the committee. And that's all I can do.
I'm just wondering if similar to dress code, if we had a workshop around it, then teachers could kind of express and then the board could hear from everybody as they look at the draft. And then, so, does it help you make a better decision or more informed? Or does it not? I'm just, that's just a suggestion.
I hear you.
Are we drawing the line between textbook adoptions? That process is different.
Correct.
To supplemental.
So, no.
Or not.
What we do for a textbook adoption is a different process.
Yes.
But all curriculum is curriculum and everything has to be approved.
Right. But it's two different processes that.
Except in this policy, 2520, that talks about curricular materials. It's addressing the textbook adoption committees because that's what the standards are within this. So, we need to have another paragraph talking about the curriculum materials process.
And, and we need to use the same language throughout that it's supplemental curricular materials versus textbook materials.
Okay.
Because the textbooks is our, that's our bulk. But there is not one textbook adoption out there that covers everything it needs to be covered, which is the reason why we're all using variety of materials.
And we've talked about that in great detail.
I don't know how else to begin.
So, how does that, quick question. How does that work then with a president of Kimo last week? And I know it will continue to come up. Video clips, YouTube clips, clips that are embedded into different presentations that teachers have created over the years? How does that go through that process? Do you just, we just send you those links and then same thing?
Okay. Okay. So, what in your minds is curriculum?
I'm sorry. Curriculum is standards. I mean, it's standards. I guess that's what we need to agree on. Because I guess that there are some newer teachers probably don't know that.
The content or the concepts?
It is just, yeah. What Shannon said. It depends on how long you've been teaching probably. But that is technically is the standard. That's how we define it.
So, you get blocked by all your employees. You just go all the way.
Marley's.
I remember it.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Curriculum materials, or what we use.
Situational scenes.
Situational scenes.
And I think, I guess in all fairness, you could just copy and paste the term curriculars to find a textbook in search of materials.
Yeah, that would make sense to me.
All of those things that way.
And I guess. I know that that's what I want to use, but let's pull it up here.
Well, we can adjust it. But I think you're going to want to say handouts, workbooks, worksheets, video clips. I mean, I know it says internet resources, but I mean, I guess we want to make, well, it does say.
I like your definition that you used earlier. And maybe we could even elaborate on it. You said applications, platforms, documents, retrieved, internet resources, instead of internet resources. But I don't know. I don't want to, no, you're painting us into a fox either. But, but it seems like that helps. It seems less of like a scary. And it maybe helps without the internet resources seeming like a worry set material.
Supplemental, okay. Let's see what you have.
Senator.
Gotcha.
I would, I would just say with regards to the curriculum material, though, it does go a little further than just textbooks. Because when we do do textbook adoptions, oftentimes it does come with those supplemental materials. So.
And we could just have everything adopted.
But and that, and that stuff that goes through a different process than what we're asking for.
Textbooks and all materials and adopted.
Adoption. Yes.
Because those would go through a separate process than what we're going to have to look at going through.
Included in the what?
Adoption. It used to just be textbooks.
And then we would say that the supplemental materials also can be separate from that curriculum.
Did you go walk the track? Did you just go?
I went all the way out to Majestic.
Oh, look at you. Good for you. As I'm driving, I'll say, what did I say?
Applications, platforms, documents.
Platforms.
Oh, that, if I got them all, but that's.
I think websites were also approved. That's why we're jumping. I might open it as a question.
I mean, it kind of goes down to like the selection and adoption section where it lines and it forces accuracy with identical content standards.
Documents should also be added to that list.
What's that?
Documents should also be added to that list, like platforms, documents, and websites.
Some information.
Okay.
Please.
I have a question really quick. That might be a difficult question. But like for ELA or history, the kids are doing a research project. They determine their topic because they're, you're like, hey, you're doing a problem solution research paper. They're choosing their topic and they go into the, to Google Scholar and they're researching and they come up with an article that's got some inappropriate things in it. We're not directing them there, but it's happening in our classroom. Are we going to be in trouble for that? They're choosing their topic. These are, you know, high school kids.
What kind of, can you give an example or not follow?
Let's say a problem solution research paper. Problem solution might be sex addiction. Right? They're choosing their topic. We have the same. Nope. Move on.
They wouldn't be able to have that topic.
Or even something that's less inflammatory, like would you please do some research on the Baltic States during the Second World War? And they're performing their own research. Some of it might get into some of the atrocities committed. Would I have to prevent all of the materials which would take away from their ability to do independent research? Or should I trust their ability to do their own research basically?
I wonder if we could include a form to add that said, you know, like when they're in high school or, you know, maybe in grade, there, a form where parents sign it. Like the child can research a topic.
I'm curious, in the syllabus that goes out to parents at the start, when you're telling the parents, this is what's going on in the classroom. And if it's stating in there that you're, that the student will be required to do X number of research projects, does the syllabus not say, you know, of their choosing or, I mean, are we not looping that into the syllabus or is it just?
Most of them have that. And then the parents do sign an internet form.
I was going to say.
So, that covers it?
The box saying my kids can go on the internet.
That's a good question. Good.
I don't know if you want to prevent high school students from researching. It's only there. I don't know. They can see it easy though. You can't tell your, they can see it. It's like high school students. Don't go research topic access.
And I think when you're giving permission, in my mind, if you're signing off, because we have parents that aren't comfortable with that. In my mind, if you're signing off and then in the syllabus you're talking about, there is going to be some ownership in that.
Right.
That that, the parent is giving us permission to allow, you know, and obviously, again, I would go back to, we can't lose sight of common sense. If a kid wants to, how many he was. You're going to say, you're going to say, no, thank you. No, thank you. That's what I mean. Like, I just, I, but you know, we have some parents that won't sign the internet use form. And so, we have to find other things. And then I do think, you know, in most of the syllabus, we, we are including that there's a research project in that that.
That's, yeah.
And then what's, what are, most of the time, the, well, I think your guys have that piece. And so, I feel like you have that.
It just doesn't say student generated.
So, you can beat that part up. We can beat that part up. That's easy. Yeah.
Okay. I'm just like trying to figure out how, I need to tell the ELA teachers to craft their syllabus to make sure they're covered, student-generated topics. Because that's, I mean, nobody tells them, this is what you have to research. They give them.
Right. They get to pick their own. Yeah.
And I think that's a good distinction too, is like, again, you're not saying, go to this website to read this awful article. They're, if they're researching it and finding it on their own, then you're not liable for what they're reading.
That's just scary in this, the tenor, what we're dealing with. And when a student addresses something and you're like, oh, I didn't tell you to do that.
But here's the thing. If you send out the syllabus and the syllabus is sufficiently informed for the parents to sign off on, and then a parent comes back and says, well, I didn't get it. The reality is. The reality is you're protected because they signed off on it. And it would be a one-off situation that may or may not need to be addressed. So, I mean, there's no blanket resolve for everything. And that's where I think sometimes we get hung up within our policies, that when we make them so narrow, it doesn't help anybody. But then if they're way too broad, then everybody's afraid to move. So I, I want us to write what our district needs, not what, um, not what you, you think would, I, I just.
I think if we could get some words on paper and start crafting that, you guys would feel better. And then we start, like, once we have a template and a draft, then we can start influencing the, the syntax and the semantics of it all. And then putting in pieces that you feel are problematic. But I, I think what Michelle is suggesting is scratching a ton of what's there and let's just write what we want, what's gonna work. That makes you, that the, allowing the board to do their due diligence, but also allows you to feel protected and, you know, in the interesting times we're living in.
So if we start this policy off with definitions, since we're broad scoping this whole policy and eliminating the other policy, because we, we don't need to, uh, have both of them respectfully, given that the process should be identical. Whether you want to put it in either one of these categories. Is the definition that I typed up here with minor input sufficient for curriculum? It's the standards adopted by the State Board of Education that mandate what students are required to learn?
Yes.
Okay. Curricular material is defined as textbooks and all materials and resources included with the adoption. Supplemental materials are instructional media, including software, audiovisual media, and internet resources, including applications, platforms, documents, or instructional, um, material obtained from sites through the world wide web. I don't even know if anyone calls it internet. But, you know, I can say internet, I just. We're, we're identifying, so, do you want me to put internet? What's that?
World wide web, really, is that what I can spot?
You know, some of us lived through it.
I think we should add just at the beginning somehow, like supplemental materials are, you know, supporting materials or just that.
Yeah, cause this sounds, it's internet based.
What about supplemental resources and materials to enhance the coherence of the total curriculum without supplanting the major instructional resources?
Hold on, I'm gonna say support. Materials. Inclusive.
Thanks for not doubting my skills.
Okay, so what did you say?
I said, could you write something like supplemental resources? Enhance the coherence of the total curriculum while supplanting the major instructional outcomes or resources?
Yeah, we could type that. Can you just copy and paste it? And we can go from there.
I assume that I didn't write that.
Well, I'm not a, I'm just thinking, maybe.
Want me to just, am I just adding it in there?
Yes, please, we'll figure out where it should go momentarily. Oh, no, 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 you're fine. I'm just, you know. So this should then be, I'm helping you. Red. And if we put it up here, so we'll have, um. Well, no, because.
So in my mind, just if this is the definition that we kinda go with, is this, this is the kinda stuff we're talking about, that the temporary? If we have some type of temporary approval process, whatever. It has to be stuff that is, um, supporting the core, which is the textbook. And not supplanting those instructional outcomes. So if you're doing the War of 1812, you're pulling something that addresses that.
So if you have a teacher made quiz, does that go under like instructional media?
If you made it, it's a, it's yours.
Yes, but does that have to go in there too?
I think we clarified last, last week that if it was something created by ourselves, that was from the curriculum that we were using, that we were okay. Is that still in play?
Yeah.
Hold on, I can't multitask.
Sorry.
Yes.
Last week, we discussed the idea that if it was something that was teacher generated, using the curriculum that was already board approved, that that was something that was.
Totally fine.
Totally fine, yes. Did not have to go through that process.
No, because you're using what was approved to create whatever it is you wanna toss in front of the kids.
And if we, if we're sharing resources in the English department and say Delaney and I teach the same subject and I create a document, she could use it too because.
If it's based off of the curriculum.
Mm-hmm. But she didn't create it and she's getting it from me and that's okay.
Well, yeah, because it's based off of the curriculum.
And remember, when you submit something from supplemental, I'll put what school requested it, but then unless we put a caveat, it's approved for, if I approve it for, if they approve it for Timberlake High School, it's approved for Lakeland High School, unless we specify something on there.
Okay.
So it, it, Delaney can use all of your stuff, you know? If it's been approved.
I can pretty much create all my stuff, so.
I just feel like it's such a slippery slope, because then, we're saying that it's okay for, and I'm not trying to take that away from them, obviously. But we're saying because they're using the same book and she created the curriculum, or she created, sorry, not the curriculum, the material to support the curriculum. Delaney can use it. But going back to the examples that we brought up last week, if I find something online that supports the curriculum that I'm using, and I would have created it, but they did an awesome job, I can't because I don't personally know that person, or they're not personally in my building, or they're not personally using my same book. But they use something that would have been exactly what I would have done had I wanted to reinvent the wheel.
Well, the difference is, is you're not utilizing something that was based off of the curriculum that was approved.
It is though. It's based off of, it's, it's, it's supporting the curriculum that's approved. Like I'm bringing back my restaurant skit again. In my book, it says I'm supposed to, the outcomes are that the students are going to be able to act like, utilize, and reenact a restaurant scenario. But the book itself, if I brought it with you and I could show it to you, has absolutely nothing in that chapter, even though that's the standard and that's the objective of the chapter. In the chapter itself, it literally gives me nothing to actually do what they're saying I expected to do. So I have found then other activities, resources and whatnot, that will help to do what that particular standard and objective was. So that's where I'm just kinda struggling a little bit, because now I think we're kinda splitting hairs on this. It's like, okay, well, if I know the person personally and they're using, the, the material is still the material. If I'm teaching, like I, I'll go back to my whole AR verb conjugation thing. If I'm teaching how to conjugate an AR verb, there's not a whole lot of differentiation between any textbook that's going to teach you how to do an AR verb. Or any online game, activity, practice, or whatever. It's just different activities and resources that allow the students to not become complacent, bored, and uninvolved. It really is just that way. And so going back to the definition of curriculum, the standard is I'm supposed to teach the conjugation of verbs. The curriculum that I have does have notes and activities that do support that, but not enough that's going to get the job done. And so that's where those supplemental materials and support materials really come into play. And so, um, you know, going back to the idea that the curriculum has been approved, we've got the umbrella, the curriculum's been approved. This is stuff that supports those standards and that curriculum. And as long as I've generated, it's okay, but if I find something better that I didn't generate and it still does the job, I then have to go through the process, which if that's the case, I'll do. But that's where I think we're getting into that crazy part of what's workable and what's not, what's reasonable and, and what's.
Is there case law of this particular bit of legislation? Have we looked to see if there's case law on it for like more specific definitions?
Uh, no, I have not got it. I have not.
Good question.
Cause I understand the point. I would say I think there's an additional layer of accountability when a teacher here creates it. I can create whatever I want and say it's based on whatever I want. And so can anyone else something bad. But, you know, if you do it, they will prefer.
Well, we're looking at, it's not like we're just printing out a worksheet from the internet and using it. We're looking at it and saying, yep, this is what I would have done, but it's already created for me and saves me an hour of my time. But it's, it looks exactly like I would have done, so I think that's what.
Or better in some cases.
Well, not, can I call it and then change it to what I want it to be?
Yeah, so it's still not, it's not like a teacher should printing out something, I'm just handing out, we're having eyes on it.
Yeah.
Work it up, add my own spin. But then I'd have to get it approved, I didn't start it.
No, we're not using it, it's not gonna help meet the standards and benefit our kids.
Well, with Amplify, there's a group of teachers that have, it's the Amplify group for my grade level that it's like a networking. And we're making lots of stuff to support the Amplify curriculum that we're currently using. So if I borrowed, um, something that they used, they modified something from the program, I would have to give that through or through the grant. Or when it goes with Amplify.
Especially if we don't personally know them, like you were talking, you sharing materials, but I'm sharing something with somebody from Tennessee or whatnot. Right.
Again, I guess this is potentially semantics, but you're saying if I don't know them because they're from Tennessee, if they're using Amplify and it's what's been approved, how is that not any different than you creating a document from Amplify? It's the same process.
Okay.
If you meet some teacher on the internet who's like, oh, hey, I did this, but we use, um, something else, we're not using Amplify, we're using Timbuktu. And you're like, okay, I'm gonna take that, that hasn't been approved to be used in our district. So regardless that the teacher's in Tennessee, it's the material that it's based off of hasn't been approved. So that's what I'm saying, if a document's created off of our curriculum, you're fine, because the curriculum was approved. If you're wanting to implement something that no one has approved, that's where it becomes problematic. Does that make sense? I mean, if, I don't know because I've not searched it, but if you go to Amplify and Amplify says, here's our resources. And those resources lead you to worksheets and Amplify's been approved. Then you're taking material that's been approved, because it's from Amplify that we've, uh, critiqued and gone through and said, yes, we're in agreement with what Amplify's providing.
And that makes sense. I'm thinking, I guess I'm thinking, um, materials that meet the standards, but are not aligned with something that Amplify is teaching. A topic. It's just standards.
Yeah, like a random worksheet or.
Yeah, like I'm teaching, but it meets the standards and that's the whole purpose. It's a standard for ISAS, parallel structure. And I don't have a worksheet on it, but it's ISAS for next week.
We are using some things that are aligned with.
Here's a worksheet on parallel structure.
There's a lot that's not. There's a lot that's just aligned with standards.
It's more concepts when I teach government.
I guess just from a curriculum standpoint, so that everybody understands, so, um, there are comprehensive textbooks that will, um, provide you, um, anchor texts. It will be an anthology based, it will have some grammar, there will be some spelling attached, there's comprehension pieces attached to it. Um, what essentially they're saying is oftentimes, because it's comprehensive in nature, there isn't enough practice built within that versus like a standalone program. That is just fifty pages of all grammar for first grade or all whatever. And so best practices that you're using both, because you will have some kids that the integrated approach works and then some need more standalone. And so what they're asking about is some of those standalone pieces. And some of them are true programs, some of them are just packets, like, um, that, you know, I mean, way back when, when we go to a curriculum story, it's the, you know, the Evan Moore book, or the Who, What, When, Where, Why book, or those kinds of things. That's what you guys were talking about, right?
Stuff that we can use, no matter what our adopted textbook is, it works.
Right, it's universal because it's standards based.
I'd like to be. Safe if it means standards.
Well, maybe there is a way that we could put into this policy when we draft it that says, okay, we're gonna have two sets of eyes, our pre-approval, two sets of eyes. And then the principal needs to just, like, or someone decides, is this substantive, is there a passage in here or something in here that needs to be approved? Or is this literally a page about parallel structure, which I don't know what it is. But like.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be like, right now, I can't.
Physical, yeah.
But can we just include in there, so we're not bringing hundreds of pages of handwriting practice sheets or something forward? Like, someone's making a decision, okay, this is, has, or any passage has something that maybe, you know, needs to go through the full process? If there's just stages where we can catch some stuff, I don't know.
And you could teach me. Grammatical equality in this and this. And that's what we've kind of been going around about, because it goes back to, yeah, trusting that the professionals, that staff are picking, are teaching things that meet the standards. And so then, and then if there is anything that is something that we are even like thinking, oh, this could be an issue, then we would already have admin input anyway.
Well, and I've always maybe had a different mentality, that the textbook is your guide, it's not your end all be all. And that I, this is what I was told when I started teaching and your kids have true mastery if they can demonstrate the standard, not the textbook. So I think that's where we're getting stuck, is not everything that's tied to the textbook is necessarily going to help our kids master the big, like, the end game, the standard. So the things that we're talking about really are standalone, like just proper nouns.
Yeah.
It's not tied to Amplify, it's not tied to Scott Forstman, we can use it no matter how many times our curriculum changes. Like, that's what I'm thinking about.
If it meets the, if it helps us meet the standard, then we just want it like automatically to be approved without jumping through all the hoops, I guess. That's what's hard.
I think that's a very broad category, like, could it help us meet the standard? Is this super broad? I think it's important to keep in mind that there's a normal distribution of opinions on pretty much the topic. And a normal distribution of values and ethics. Uh, but some people will say, agree with what most people likely do and some people won't. And so I think there should be more specific category than that.
But it's already been defined what we can and cannot touch on. So as long as we are staying within the lane of what has been defined on the topic, then we should be trusted.
The standard.
Yeah, I was just on very specific.
And then like, when I say the standard, I can say my kids by the end of the year need to add and subtract within a thousand using strategies.
Yeah, that's what I'm speaking of.
So when I say the standard, it is specific, it's just, there's a lot.
Right. Yeah, no, it's not, the standards is not just this very, very, it's, they're, they're very specific and we have to meet those standards. So there's not a, there's not all the widdle room. We're not going to be teaching so many things.
Is pretty broad, don't you think helping the standard is a broad statement?
No, because we, as educators, know what the standards are. So we know that there's like three point four is the standard. Like, if you're in, in English classroom, you know, this is my standard I have to hit, my group of rules or objectives that I have to achieve by the end of the year with my students.
I think when he's trying, cause somebody brought this up to me and they put a different perspective on it and correct me if I'm wrong.
Go for it, yeah.
Uh, because I, cause I've been completely thinking like that. And somebody brought up the point of, okay, it's a math equation, but it's the furbage in the math equation that somebody's going to have an issue with. So if you ever have to worry about, if Tommy's two dads go to the store and, and that's where it goes on.
And she just said, she said, we, we know what we are not supposed to be doing. So therefore we would not create a problem that sounded that way.
But that's where, that's where we're not being, uh, I don't wanna say not trusted, but that's where we're being looked at. Um, because I hadn't even thought about that. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's.
Yeah, go for it.
That's, um.
No, that's right. And like, trust is a stick for, right? Like, I trust my wife, but I don't trust her to dig a hole and install a key on a polyethylene pipe, which is why I was late today. But it's not. But it's not like that.
I trust my wife. We are being recorded. She's going to hear you.
This is public record, right?
Maybe I live in a different world in primary. I don't get into a lot of really controversial topics in second grade. I just want my kids to feel the money and add. That's it.
These don't.
My daughter hated adding the subtraction. She's like, I can do multiplication, division, no problem, but adding and subtracting.
Yeah, I think that goes back to your perspective. Because as a teacher, our perspective is we have to get them to this end game.
Right.
His perspective is what are you going to throw in their long way?
Exactly.
Well, and I, and I think going back to what you were saying about the trust versus the what could potentially wind up in a word problem or whatever. I think the issue becomes, there are those of us who feel like because we're speaking up, that people think that we're trying to hide something. We're not trying to hide anything. I'm as transparent. You can take a look at everything I do in classroom. I post every, I'll add anybody who wants to be on my Google classroom. Join my Google classroom, see what my students are doing on a daily basis. So it's, it's not an issue of that. It's just, again, it really just comes down to, and I do use that word trust, that trust factor of I know what's best for the student sitting in front of me to learn the concept that I'm trying to get them to learn at a mastery-based level. I'm not pulling any funny business. I know the policies of our district when it comes to certain things that we are not supposed to attach or talk about or bring up or address. Understood. I'm a rule follower. That's the rule. So that's why I'm really, I have a stake in this game because I am a rule. If you tell me every single thing that I put in front of a kid has to go through board approval, Lynn's going to have a folder full of stuff for me on Monday because I'm like, that's fine. You're telling me that's what I have to do? That's what I will do. It's not going to be fun for anybody because that's a lot of stuff, but hey. So, you know, but I do want to make sure that, that's why I said last week, I want to find a policy that's going to work for everybody, meet the objectives of make sure that the board is governing the way they're supposed to be when it comes to the policy creation, but also make it workable for the people that have to do this on a daily basis. Because we really are the ones.
Policies and those ethics that we sign off every year.
Absolutely. So, you know.
When somebody said that to me last week, I was like, oh, that's what you guys were worried about?
Exactly. Because something, because that would have entered my mind. Because I'm too busy thinking about how to get to that end game, not all this other fluffy stuff over here. I don't care about any of that. So it doesn't enter my brain.
Curriculum materials adoption committee, but they don't have curriculum material. Okay, because we're, we're separating them. Okay, perfect. Curriculum materials versus supplemental.
Our curricular materials adoption committees are the curriculum committees.
Perfect, okay.
So we're going to have to speak the right wing.
Separate, okay, that's, I saw that and I'm like, oh, wait a minute. No, we've got three different categories now. So perfect. It is toasty. I have to go to a baseball game. I know it is, but I kind of wish I'd had a T-shirt in my class, in my, in my car.
Instead of saying major, can you put core?
Good idea.
All right, so that comes back down here. So if we go from the definitions into the curricular adoption, materials adoption. So the board establishes the curricular materials adoption committee for the purpose of advising the board on the selection of curricular materials. At least within the district, at least half of the committee must be comprised of persons other than the book educators and trustees and shall include parents of a child or children attending school within the district. All meetings of the committee shall be held in open session and duly noticed. Curricular materials adoption committees, lawyers responsible for recommending textbooks and core instructional materials for consideration by board. The function of the committee is to ensure that materials are selected in performance with stated criteria and established district goals and objectives. Stated criteria, shouldn't that be state standards?
Yeah.
Recommendations will be made by the committee to superintendent with the final decision resting with the board.
Do you want to say that typically doesn't, I mean, we've had it where, well, I mean, yes, but typically sometimes we've had the actual committee. Like when we did math, we had the committee come and make recommendations to the board. Other times it's been me making recommendations. Does that matter? I feel like when it is the committee, it becomes more of a presentation based.
Right.
We've done it differently, so.
Yeah. And it is also kind of governed by what the leadership wants, so.
I mean, ultimately the superintendent is the provider of recommendation in the sense of, so I guess if we're going to make this what we do, we've done it differently, so.
So that our recommendations will be made. We don't know by whom. And the final decision rests with the board. Any person may submit written objections to any curricular materials under consideration. For dual credit courses offered through institutions of higher education, the selection, adoption and removal of curricular materials is handled by the provider. The district has no control over the selection, adoption and removal of curricular materials and it is the responsibility of the parent to have knowledge of and will review such materials prior to the student enrollment. Okay, so then we'll go to selection and adoption. The curricular materials adoption committee will evaluate materials based on a set of selection criteria. The board is legally responsible for approving and for providing all the necessary curricular materials used in the district. Textbook and instructional materials shall provide quality learning experiences for students and include the following. Needs to align, aligns and enforces accuracy with Idaho content standards. Maybe that's what that means to stay up here instead of state standards.
Well, maybe that's what number one meant as well, thinking it's with the strike through, thinking of it like now with our definition of curriculum as a state standards.
Are you saying it should be number one?
Well, no, I'm just thinking it's, number one has a strike through and not saying it needs to be inter, like that we need to have it. But I read it differently earlier, thinking of it now that we're defining curriculum as standards. Then number two just basically says the same thing. Does that make sense? Instead of curriculum meaning the textbooks.
Well, this is with respect to curricular materials adoption. Curricular materials, which are the main textbooks and whatnot. It's not the supplemental. Am I following you? Again.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, yeah, and I don't, I don't know. I'm speaking out loud, thinking when it says enrich and support the curriculum, meaning the materials are enriching and supporting the curriculum slash state standards. But then we wouldn't need that and number two, because that basically just says the same thing in a different way.
Okay, so.
I don't care if it's still, has a strike through. That's fine.
So textbooks and instructional materials shall provide quality learning experiences for students and enrich and support the curriculum.
Which would be what we were saying about state standards.
Right.
So maybe that's why a number two was added instead of, or I guess substituting that.
I got you.
And I'm not, I'm not bringing it up saying we should change it. I'm just saying maybe that's why it has a strike through.
Well, it has a strike through because this was initially, we're merging the two right now. And because we didn't define curriculum and curricular materials, we didn't define that before. I personally didn't know that that was a thing, but it is. So, and that's totally fine. So do we want to put it back? Because if you take out the, if you stop it here, it makes sense. Input thoughts? See if we care.
We're all brings it at this point.
We did bring back we could change, I mean, I know curriculum too. Lots of people mean the standards, but we could change it to say enrich and support the.
I could say.
Standard.
Enrich, support, align and enforce the curriculum.
There we go.
There you go, the parallel structures.
Sure.
To come back to.
Cute.
I'm working her on now.
Don't worry, don't forget all the now. What's a now? We never studied that.
I'll say something.
Like I know you studied that.
We can use that in practice.
But I don't remember what it's called. Exactly. That's the thing. It's like math and all.
So we're still going to align that up? I just didn't want to make it all. Stimulate growth in knowledge, literary appreciation, aesthetic value and ethical standards. Are there ethical standards that the children have to abide by?
Student handle.
Oh, yeah, they have.
Oh, yeah, they can, cheating, plagiarism, all those things.
There's a student conduct.
Thank you. Be congruent with identified instructional objectives. Present varied viewpoints on all issues, aligns, why are we singular? Align with board policies and enacted resolutions. Ensure usability for teachers and students. Provide materials for scaffolding and supports for differentiation and provide variable assessment tools to support data-driven decisions.
Data-driven decisions.
Maybe.
I think it says viable.
It's viable, but.
There's a player, so I think it says that.
What was that?
It says viable, not variable.
Thank you. But she was continuing. What?
But provide viable assessment, not tools.
Yeah.
But what data-driven decisions are you referring to?
I don't know.
Like that's what I'm asking.
So, let's see here. Textbooks and instructional materials.
Formative assessment so that you can inform your instruction, Mary.
Right, but.
Mary.
The decision. It, it seems like would kind of.
Instructional.
I would say.
The principal's side of me is coming out.
Formative?
Instructional decision.
So data-driven instructional materials.
AKA formative?
All right.
So it looks, the number six is a little strong here. Like, do we have to present very few points on, say, the moral acceptability of the Holocaust?
I know, I wonder if all is too big of a word.
It's in the standards.
Very few points.
On you. I mean, no.
Many. I thought we changed it to like to many or.
Well, we took off the. Because we just said all issues within your standards.
Well, and that's in, that's in other policies.
Can we just put on all issues within content standards?
Well, because most of your standards, if you have to give a, it will tell you you have to provide.
You have both sides.
Both sides.
Present very few points on issues within the content standards?
Do we still want all though, if it's within the content standards? Because that needs to be, no, is that too rich? Very few points on all.
Well, so we have.
Have to cover it, right?
Issues, so the content standards has issues that we need to present very few points. Okay. When I'm kicking back to the controversial issue policy, it says something in there about needing to present.
Right.
Well, with the controversial issues, that has like, it's not just the teacher doing a thing. The teacher has to get it cleared through the principal, that the principal's questioning it, then then go through the superintendent. So that it's not just occurring. There's steps to make sure that it's done according to policy. So, or just going with the wording that's in there. Okay. And it's similar to that.
But like, for instance, if you're the history teacher and you're teaching the Civil War, you're giving those perspectives.
Confederate some of that.
Right. Whether you agree with one, you're giving the first, that's, that's how I read it, that you're giving both perspectives.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense in most places, but I thought all was a little strong. Especially if it applies to something like math or representing very few points on what the spirit of two is.
Oh, no.
Yeah, like, I think it makes sense in the context of, of history and topics like that.
Yeah.
But it looks to me as written that it applies to all curriculum.
So the fact that she took out all, is that on issues within the content?
No, I think it's, yes.
Okay.
Because the standards are pretty specific.
Any other input? Use of materials, curricular materials shall be made available for student use. It's a good thing. Students will not be charged for norm wear. Students will be charged for unreasonable damage, excessive wear and lost materials. School librarian will maintain records necessary for proper accounting of all curricular materials.
So then in between use of materials and removal, we now need to add the supplemental materials process.
Correct. Did I spell it right? No, I did not. Correct.
Kirk.
Kirk.
We and I.
There you go.
Thanks, Google.
What I'm trying to do is, oh, wait, no. So, okay, so here, yeah, I get what you're saying. Here. Since we delineated. Right, yeah. Uh, we need to include the process. So. So supplemental materials enhance the coherence of the total curriculum without supplanting the major instructional resources. You swapped the word major for core earlier. You're right. Thank you. A teacher may utilize supplemental materials as part of the course of instruction or refer students to utilize supplemental materials for educational purposes and as part of the educational process. Do we need to say anything more about using supplemental materials?
Well, we need to have the process by which we can use them, so.
Is it okay if I change the process and say email Lisa?
Make sure you include Lynn's address in this paragraph.
You might want to have like a shared file folder or drive of some kind. All right. Here would be approval process. Here would be approval process.
Really? Coming up on our ground, I mean, last week.
Okay, that's all I got. All materials, there we go.
This is where we get into the nitty-gritty of it. There's your proposition that, well, I guess the board's proposition that it needs to go through two sets of eyes. Let's define whose eyes need to be on it for that.
That's preliminary, that's if we wanna use it like day of and somebody, so the generic process.
Does that need to be codified?
So, yeah. Because I think you do the big process and then in case of emergency, great, last process.
Or like my second, my, my decisions. Or Monday on Friday.
Is it by the board?
We'll always, yeah, last week we talked about.
Nobody needs to see my work. I'm so tired.
Not even like a weekend of preparing, but five hours, six weeks, a week. And that, like, we talked about last week, that's part of our professional, like, development, and we need to make sure we are flexible, we evaluate them whether we're not flexible, so.
Approved. I don't know what to say.
Maybe this is a really good time to just pause. That's what I was just gonna say, that.
Can we make a motion, we just call it.
We went a little late last week, we could go a little early today, right?
We think about this one for a week.
Maybe like brainstorm some ideas and think about what that means and what that looks like and.
Okay.
It is six twenty-three, we'll go ahead and end the curriculum committee. Stop recording.